...invocation led by Reverend Patricia King, Associate Minister of Pilgrims Rest AME Zion Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance at a moment of silence following the pledge in memory of the victims of Charlottesville.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Father God, I thank you this morning for allowing us to be in this place this morning. We thank you for awakening us and starting us on our way. Father, we ask right now that let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable unto you this morning. Every word that would be said in here this morning, we ask that you covered, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. But your Jesus is with us, our nation, our state, and our people. And his republic, which stands one nation under God, is invisible, we will never be just satisfied.
And if you would, please remain standing. Would like for you to, in your own way and a silent prayer, to remember the victims of the Charlottesville attacks over the weekend. I know you all have heard and read about those attacks, so please, in your own way, remember the victims, and also our country, our state, and our city at the same time.
Roll call. President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules. Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for coming. The rules of the council are very simple. We just ask everyone to please turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, you'll have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer. That's your indication that it's time to start wrapping up your comments. Please give us your name and address for the record, and if you do have any questions or comments, please address those to me. I'm the chair. I will ask the appropriate member of the administration or the council to address those concerns at that time. Just a moment ago, we had a moment of silent prayer for the victims of the Charlottesville attacks over the weekends. I know you all are familiar with what we're talking about. It's all over the news, and it's something that we, as Americans, abhor. Any type of bigotry, racism, especially in the name of patriotism, is completely wrong. So, on this day, this election day, as Americans, and specifically today, Alabamians, we all have the freedom to go to the polls, to vote for a new United States Senator, and then, of course, next week, we go to the polls to vote in municipal elections. You know, these rights and these freedoms are only possible because so many have lived and died for us in the past to preserve our freedoms and to ensure the liberty for everyone. The white supremacists and neo-Nazis who rallied in Charlottesville are opposed to those very American ideals, and they are spewing hatred and bigotry that, in my opinion, cannot be tolerated in this city, this state, or this country. And I know some of my colleagues would also like to make a statement, so I'm going to open up the floor for whoever would like to say something.
Madam President.
Mr. Daze.
Thank you. I have said before, and I want to repeat today, this is a nation of immigrants. Some came here voluntarily, and many came involuntarily. But many, many came escaping religious, political, and ethnic persecution. Lady Liberty lifts her lamp beside the golden door. Intolerance in any form is un-American. This country is not owned by any one person or any one group of people. It is owned by we, the people, every single one of us. Those who hate and attack others because of how they look or think are not patriots. They are hoodlums, thugs, and bullies. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Mr. Williams.
I was going to ask everyone, first of all, if they'll Google Archbishop of Philadelphia and see what he had to say. There's nothing that I can say that is going to make it better. I'm not going to change what has happened, but we have a poison in our country, and almost no one is innocent somewhere in their heart. And if we are ever going to fix this thing that so many are rightfully angry about today, we need first fix our own hearts and be absolutely convicted to encouraging others to do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small.
Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the counterlight vigil at the Mardi Gras Park. It was well-attended, especially for the last minute. Many people came out and, you know, in support. You know, hatred is just a evil thing. God is love. If you don't have no love in your heart, you don't have any God. And for people to walk around here and saying that they are Christians and they have hatred in their heart, you know, how do you expect to get to heaven? You know, God hates one thing, and that's sin. And when you hate, that is sin. We are all here to work together as Christians, to strive together, to help each other. And when we condemn one person, or condemn certainly other group, it's not Christian, and it's not what God wants us to be. I hear that Councilman Richardson always states all the time that, you know, we all are part of the human race. And when he stated that, I thought about when I was in mortuary school, when I had asked, you know, my professor, do, you know, Caucasian, do they turn darker when they die? He said to me, he said, CJ, he said, "Look in the palm of your hand." He said, "My palm is no different than your palm." You know, we are all the same. And that's one thing that we have to remember. We are all the same because we all was created by God. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Small. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you for this opportunity. Our city, community, our nation, has no place for hate. It consumes a person and makes them irrational. As a member of a minority religion, I've been on the receiving end, and it's just devastating for an individual to have that kind of treatment. As my colleagues have already said, and I'll be brief, it really takes tolerance. It takes love, and our founding principles of allowing the expression is important, but as I said in the beginning, hate has no place. It is not anything that will be ever productive. It will only bring us down. So, if we all draw the line at that, then we can continue to communicate, to share ideas, and you can disagree, but with civil discourse, not violence, not killing, not hating to the point, again, where you are just absolutely irrational. It is not a good human characteristic, and we must always remain human and humane. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
I just want to join my colleagues in repudiating what took place in Charlottesville. It was unnecessary, unwarranted, totally unproductive. We've got to come to the point where we can acknowledge and accept each other for our various differences. The one thing that we all know is that there won't be some humongous plane or some gigantic ship that's going to take everyone that you don't want here away from here. We're here, and we're not going anywhere. So, we might as well learn to get along, learn to appreciate that while you see the glass half-empty, I might see it half-full. You might be for Texas, I might be against it. It's what makes us uniquely American, and no one culture, creed, or society owns the deed to this country. None. All of us are immigrants, some by choice, some by force, but all of us are immigrants. And so, we might as well learn, since we're going to be in this gigantic sandbox, to take our tools and our toys and play together. Either we'll prosper together as a country and as a society, or we'll perish together, hating each other for unnecessary things, and hating each other for things that we cannot change. You had no more choice in the color of your skin than I had, but I'm proud of my color. I'm proud of my culture, and I'm proud that you're proud of yours. Edmund Burke said that if you're not outraged, pardon me, Heather said, "If you're not outraged, then you're not paying attention." The young lady that lost her life the other evening, that was her last Facebook post, not knowing that she was going to die that evening, but she was willing to say something, willing to be active, willing to make certain that her voice counted. And only thing that will keep evil from taking over is for good men to say something, and that's what we need to do now. When we hear people make these all-color comments, all-color commentaries, and we laugh at it, knowing that it's not funny and it's not in order, we ought to say something. We ought to make the environment so toxic for that kind of behavior that we drive it out. But many of us perpetuate this kind of behavior by laughing at it and egging it on, and continuing to associate with people that we know harbor feelings in their hearts that are not good and conducive for this society. So, I'm praying for all of the communities across this country that are going through moments and trials and times of angst at this period, and it seems to me like it's happening every three or four months. And I don't know what the answer is. We've had all kinds of meetings, and the people that show up to the meetings are the people that are already good with one another. And so, I do know that prayer works, and that's my answer, and I would invite the citizens of Mobile to pray that that evil spirit that has taken over in other communities will be at bay here, so that we can have peace and harmony in our community.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. I do appreciate all of these comments. I think the driving force behind hate is ignorance. I think it's plain old ignorance, and I think we all ought to take some of this blame for the ignorance. They don't know the truth. The truth is not in books about who we are. You can go to the University of South Alabama and get all of the volumes of books they have out there, and you won't find the truth about who we are. So, we got to go on what we've been told, which was a lie. We're operating on this lie. I'm going to take you back to the Dred Scott decision of 1859, in which the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court issued the opinion. Dred Scott was a black man who lived with his master in Illinois, which is a free state, and when he died, his wife brought him back to Missouri, which was a slave state, and they put him back in slavery. And he went to the Supreme Court saying, "Since I lived in a free state, she can't make me go back to slavery." And the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court issued that opinion, that this Negro is a being of an inferior order and has made absolutely no contributions to the world, and he's unfit to associate with the white man, either in social or political relations, and he must be kept in slavery for his own good. If I was a white person in Mississippi and I read that, would I believe it? Yes, I would believe it. Yes, I would believe it, that they are unfit to associate with the white race. We know better now. We know Roger B. Tanny was lying. We know better. But we still are operating on this lie. I want to take just a moment to explain who I am. My skin is black. My hair is nappy. My nose is large. All had to do with heat. My ancestors came from Africa, the hottest continent in the world. So, God put melanin in my ancestor's skin to turn it black, to repel it from the ultraviolet sun rays, lest they would have been scotched in the desert. People who left Africa, the same people who left Africa, went other places, they didn't need any melanin. That's why you're white. You don't have any melanin in your skin. You're susceptible to skin cancer because there's nothing to protect you from the ultraviolet sun rays, and you have to bathe up at all kinds of lotion when you go to the beach. I don't because I have melanin in my skin. Heat burns up oxygen. You can die from asphyxiation, and the fire never got to you. So, we got big nose so we can breathe. Your ancestor went to the colder climate, and you didn't have to fight for air. You have a smaller nose. Collage running all the way down. I don't have no college. My nose goes straight down when I mash it. We are the same people. Some left, went one way, and some went another way. Those stayed, we have these features. The sun going to burn up my brains, my hair balled up to repair the sun rays. Only in Sub-Saharan Africa would you find that most people in this world, ninety-six percent of the people in the world, all have a straight head. If there's a small group who stayed under that fire, and it finally brought us to America, we are the same people. This is how you determine whether or not we are in the same race. If we can procreate, if I can procreate with who I am, you're in my race. We all must be able to stand, walk upright, laugh, cry, talk, think, reason, and plan. If you're not in my race, then you've got to do something other than that. You've got to perform a function that I cannot perform. If you can't do no more than me, you're in the race with me. Color has nothing to do with our function. It's incidental to who we are. We are members, we are homo sapiens. We are members of the same race, the human race. There are no such, there is no such thing as more to race, as black race. That's a hunk of junk. It ought to be erased from the books in this nation. We are the only nation left in the world still holding on to this footage that's about race. No other race, no other group of people, no other nation dealing with race but America. Go get your, go get your books, and go back prior to slavery and find any indication that people would judge, put in any kind of race because of the color of their skin. If it's born out of slavery, we need its time to let it go. I'm going to do this, and I'm through with that. This is Acts 17:26. And God made, let me get my glasses. And God made from one blood all nations of men for to dwell on all of the face of the earth. That's Adam. From one blood, from Adam, God made all nations of men for to dwell on all the face, North America, South America, Europe, Asia, Africa. They're all Adam's children. We are all one race. I close down because y'all don't heard enough. I'll let it go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Appreciate it. All right. Ms. Lambert.
Approval of Minutes of August 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody here this morning. My remark about Charlottesville is simply that it's absolutely heartbreaking. You've heard enough remarks today about it. Did a press release on it, but I'm reminded that it really takes leadership, and it takes leadership based on unity and love to go forward. Love trumps hate 100% of the time. I'm reminded of a prayer that I recited every day in school. Part of that prayer was, "May the words and deeds of our mouth be such, may the words and deeds be such that those who were before us will not be ashamed, and those who follow after will find in us an example of truth and courage." Just think about that, and that's how we should live our lives, and doing that, we will overcome the kind of things that we've seen in Charlottesville. Now, on a much different note, today I have a real honor and pleasure of recognizing and giving a certificate of recognition to the firefighter of the month, so I'd ask Captain Keller, Chief, excuse me, Chief Keller and firefighter Blake Duke to please approach Proud of reading this, I'll just tell you that Blake is a native of Oklahoma and happened to marry a lady from Mobile that, like so many Mobile ladies, bring their men back here, which we're grateful for. He's been a firefighter for seven years, five years. So, in five years, he's had an amazing career already. Chief Keller expressed it. He said, when he met Blake, when he was going through the orientation, that he knew that he was, this is not exactly his words, but he knew he was amped up or ramped up and full of energy to go, and I think it's been evident by what he's done personally to get to where he is today. So, I'll start, and I'll just read the proclamation, then have another comment. Firefighter Blake Duke volunteered his time and knowledge to help teach the Rapid Intervention Team course, not only to new recruits, but also to the department as well. Blake also voluntarily took on the task of constructing a Denver prop for the department to use, eliminating the need to borrow one from another department nearby. He attended the Smoke Diver class at the Alabama Fire College, which is a very physically and mentally demanding course, and during his class, only fourteen out of twenty-seven attendees completed the course, and only one-tenth of one percent of all Alabama firefighters have attained this certification. He paid his own tuition, travel, hotel, and meals, as well as having his shifts covered while he was gone. Blake is the epitome of what a professional firefighter looks like, and is even a better person. Now, therefore, on behalf of all the citizens, with our sincerest thanks, we are pleased to award the certificate of recognition to him as firefighter of the month for July 27th, signed by Gina Gregory, Mark Seeley, and myself. Congratulations, firefighter.
I would like to say this without the microphone thinking that you can hear me. We only have three firefighters in Mobile that have this certification, and it's Chief Seeley, Captain Peterson, and yours truly here. But let me say this, that that is amazing, it's like being in a Navy SEAL. Unbelievable. And so, I asked him what were his other personal aspirations, and he said, "Well, I am going to the paramedic school, and that ends in December." So, to say that he is enthusiastic and energetic is really an understatement, and Mobile is so fortunate to have somebody so driven, one who sacrificed their time, their energy, their talents, to help protect us. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Another item is that we received the decision by BLAST Fitness to locate its corporate headquarters in Mobile, which is validation that we're becoming a more business-friendly city. We appreciate the confidence shown in our city by Dean Parker and his team at BLAST Fitness, and we welcome them as our newest corporate citizen. As we say, on an ongoing basis, we are open for business, and we look forward to entertaining anybody that's considering Mobile to either open a business or move a business here. This Saturday is what we're calling Single Stream Saturday. It has to do with single-stream recycling. The leadership Mobile's Environmental Project Group will be hosting it Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00. We're promoting the new single-stream locations at Midtown and at Langham Park. During the event, volunteers will be on hand to answer questions about single-stream recycling. The first 50 recyclers at each location will receive a blue recycling bin. Our ultimate goal is to create a more robust recycling program while eliminating litter throughout our city. On stormwater, we continue to strengthen our stormwater management plan to protect our natural resources and to create a cleaner, greener community. The plan is now available for review and comment at stormwatermobile.org. Comments may be submitted via email to that website through September 2nd. When we first stepped in office, we were the poster child for how not to do stormwater. Given a little more time, we will be the poster child for stormwater excellence. So, I am grateful to all the city employees and every department who play an integral role in making sure that we're doing the right things. It just doesn't happen overnight, and takes a lot of leadership and involvement, so thanks to everybody that's involved in that. Was anybody in here downtown Friday night, last Friday night? Yep, just a couple. Okay. Well, we sure were. Good to see you. Matter of fact, we were walking in front of the bands, in front of the snare drums together. Good to see you. Well, let me say this, that Friday night's art walk was on steroids. It was an amazing event. It was probably the largest art walk that we've had. I just want to thank the organizers, the artists, and the citizens who came out to celebrate, and I think it's just a predictor of what the future holds, of people getting excited about the things going on in the city and starting to do things on their own accord, finding ways to finance it. But it was a wonderful event, and for those that didn't make it there, I hope that you'll keep your ear to the ground, understand what you missed, and don't miss it the next time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Rich has a proclamation.
I had originally told the recipients that they would have to sit through some public hearings. However, they also told me that they need to get back to their ceramics studio to get ready for classes that start tomorrow, so thank you for allowing me this opportunity to go prior to the public hearings. And if they would come down, I'll introduce them. And this was my lucky day to have the support of these fine individuals within our city. We have Tony, Professor Tony Wright, Lauren Carroll, and also it's Ramon De Anda, De Anda? Okay, thank you. All of them are coming out of the ceramics department, and if you've seen the tile wall, you notice that it got a new, refreshing amount of tiles because of the new playground. I still get asked today if there's other opportunities to expand the tile wall, and when we come in to do the next program, which is the splash pad in the same area, I'm hoping that we have a very good relationship with the ceramics department, because, as I said, I didn't know what type of paints to use. I didn't know how, where we would find the kiln to fire it in, but it was something that we were determined to do. So, with their help and their efforts, we were successful, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Because of their tireless efforts, Professor Tony Wright, Mr. Ramon De Anda, and Ms. Lauren Carroll, hundreds of area residents, young and old, have and will have for years a memento at the newly renovated Playground Express at Medal of Honor Park. These mementos adored the hand-print tile wall, which was a key part of the new playground at Medal of Honor Park, which is visited by thousands from across our city and area every year. Professor Wright, Ramon, and Lauren volunteering their artistic expertise many hours, I can attest to that, were absolutely vital to the success of this project. And whereas their efforts consisted of about spending weekends working with citizens, creating these hand tiles, so they were literally on the ground with us, and then firing them, which were hundreds of tiles, in their which were hundreds of tiles, in their kiln at the University of South Alabama's ceramics studio. I, therefore, Besse Rich, council member of District 6, along with our mayor and members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 15th, as USA Ceramics Program Day in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to join us in extending our appreciation to Professor Wright, Ramon, and Lauren for their service and their efforts. Thank you so much. [applause] Give this proclamation to your professor, and then each one of you has a certificate. So just make sure you get the correct one with your names. But I know that Professor Wright would like to tell you about another project that their studio is involved in, and so if you'd like to take a minute or two?
Okay.
Great.
Well, I'd just like to say this was one of many projects we've done over the years. I've been here 17 years. I'm a transplanted Midwesterner, but I feel like I've been welcomed as a Mobilean. But the ceramics, the art department in general, we've done several things to help out the community. And the University of South Alabama is dedicated to, what's the term, social engagement? Community service and social engagement? And so any time that we can put into practice, things that we're actually trying to teach in the classroom anyway, it's a win-win situation. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that once again, we'll be involved with the annual Art Soup fundraiser, which will be November 17th. If you're not familiar, it's a way that artists can make handmade bowls. We get local chefs to make their signature soups. It all goes to a fundraiser that helps the hungry and homeless in our community. So it's just one of many things where we can actually put into practice what we're doing in the classroom to help out the community. So thank you for this recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And Besse, if you could get some photos, Marion has got her camera.
Yes, okay. It's a photo op. That's very important. Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, back to class.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Lambert?
Adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. Appeals. We have requests of a pour away with the noise ordinance on September 2nd on Wagner and Halveston Streets, what, Halveston Street between Wagner and Hathcock Streets. And on August 26th at Cooper Riverside Park.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezone property at 75, 79, 113, 123, and 129 West Drive, and 108, 110, 114, 120, and 124 Center Drive. East side of West Drive, 120 feet north of Fair and Woods Court, extending to the west side of Center Drive, 625 feet south of Old Shell Road, from R1, R3 to R3.
All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Casey Pipes, 2255 Ashwin Place, representing the developer Broad Street Partners. Mr. Craig Stipes is with me of Broad Street Partners, and he's available to answer any questions as well. A quick overview, we were here a few months ago in May, rezoning 80-some-odd percent of this property from R1 to R3 for a student housing project called The Landing. You may recall, this is one where we're going to be improving Center Drive, which is currently unpaved to a paved road, and facilitating the access into this development only off Center, and not even having the, you may recall, there was a fire access off West, and that's been eliminated. Shortly after that rezoning and approval, two additional lots or some additional land, about one more acre, came in that was available to the developer. So they've incorporated that. It's now going to be almost a six-acre site. This squares up the property, so there's just as much frontage on Center as there is on West. And they are incorporating this new land into the previously rezoned property. And so now, what we'll have is one lot, 5.9 acres, one PUD, and we need one zoning district, obviously, to eliminate the split zoning. And so that's why we're here. The same grounds that were appropriate for the rezoning before are still here. The city has four bases for rezoning property, and at this time, all four of these bases are active. You only need one. And we'll go through them real quickly. The first two are manifest error in the zoning code or changing conditions. What we have is R1 property that the Future Land Use Map recently adopted calls for being mixed-density residential. That puts the current zoning kind of at odds with what the Future Land Use Plan of the city is. That also represents the fact that there's a changing in the conditions out there to warrant the change from what was appropriate before, when it may have initially been zoned, to what's appropriate now. The Future Land Use Map talks about mixed-density residential being directly related to R3. It is the most appropriate zoning you can put on the property using the current zoning districts we have. We all know we'll have future different zoning districts, but this is the best match we have with the current zoning district options. The changing conditions are also that we'll never get a single-family residential R1 development off Center Drive as an unpaved street. It's just going to be one-off house construction. Nobody is ever going to have enough density or development to pave that road on their own. This project puts enough development potential in there for Broad Street to take that road down from Old Shell all the way to their project and really improve things, capture the stormwater for the first time, and detain it in their own facility, pave the street, build the sidewalks, and really improve that area of District 6. The other two bases for rezoning is a need, increased need for this. The University of South Alabama, not just the ceramics department, which we've just heard from, but the whole school is growing. It's doing well. It has a history of unmet off-campus student housing, probably back from when it was more of a commuter school than a destination school. And there is still an unmet demand for student housing in this area. And you see that by the fact that there are single-family residential homes that have become rental homes for students. And then the last reason is the subdivision of the property into one lot creates a situation where 80-some-odd percent of this one lot is now zoned R3, and we've got this little piece that's R1. We need the rezoning to make it all one zoning district, R3. Any questions for me?
Any questions of Mr. Pipes?
I don't have a question, but I'd also like to add that the developer was extremely transparent in working with the residents that will be affected by the change in zoning, and mitigated a lot of the concerns that they had as part of the PUD. And I understand this portion that will now go under his wings will also have those same exact conditions imposed as well.
Those PUD conditions were approved by the Planning Commission, haven't been appealed by anybody, and so those are the conditions that the development would go forward with.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning, please come to the podium. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Thank you for taking the opportunity, for giving me the opportunity. My name is Brooke Lowman. I am a regional manager with Peak Campus Management. We represent the Edge on Old Shell Road, a current student housing complex here in Mobile. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of the negative impact of adding additional beds to the student housing market. Previous years, the properties around the market have stabilized around 95%. This year, with the opening of the new complex, 110, the market will stabilize around 80% occupied at best. We're looking at stabilizing in the mid-'70s ourselves. So I'm sure you can understand that that is not a stabilization point that we would like to be at or sustainable for the property. The addition of more beds will only be more detrimental to multiple businesses in the area. So there are several large-scale student housing complexes in the area now that are currently affected by not only this, but also the fact that the university will be adding 350 on-campus beds next year as well. So I'm sure that you can understand the demand analysis of this market will be greatly affected by this. The market will likely become further strained. At lower occupancy, it makes it much more difficult for us to invest back in the property and the community. Capital projects and property upgrades are put on hold. I've personally witnessed a market become strained. I have managed properties all across the country, and I have personally witnessed the detrimental effects of a market stabilizing at 80%. The strain is not only on the large, traditional student housing complexes, but also the campus and the smaller units, such as duplexes, rental homes, individuals that count on student renters to make that successful for them. The other item that I wanted to mention is this could cause a potential pedestrian issue for our property. We're currently, our parking lot and our property are currently split by the road that the complex will likely use to funnel a majority of its traffic through.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions of the speaker?
I can.
Mrs. Rich?
I'm very intrigued that you talked about the off-site parking that you have, because one of the concerns that I get from residents that have to use their West Drive as their only way in and out, and this, again, will not access, you know, for vehicular traffic, the lack of lighting, street lighting that is needed up at the top. And I wondered if your apartment complex would consider adding some lighting. This development will put some lighting on West, which is not required. They'll automatically do it on Center, but because the residents were so concerned, they were willing to do that. And so there is a lot of concerns that I have about that lack of lighting and perhaps the safety of the person that rents from you.
Okay. I mean, that's definitely a consideration that I wasn't aware of, but I can definitely take back to ownership.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Manzi?
Yes, ma'am. Can I get your name again, please?
Brooke.
Ms. Brooke, you represent?
Peak Campus. We're the management company for the Edge on Old Shell Road.
And when did you all open?
I'm sorry?
When did you all open?
So we took over ownership May of 2016.
Were there, prior to you all opening, were there other student housing developments in the area?
Yes, correct. Student Quarters in the Grove were already existing at that point.
Right. So that's all this gentleman's doing, exactly what you all did.
I understand. I just want to bring up the fact that it could be detrimental on not only our business, but the other businesses affected in the community.
It's a capitalistic market. He sees an opportunity. If his numbers didn't work, he wouldn't be doing it, similar to what your company did, the company before it. Sounds like progress. They've worked out all the issues. I just want to make certain that, you know, you all were not a 20, 30, 40-year-old development, but something relatively new, that, you know, the same argument could have been made. You know, somebody could have been here when you all's application were before us.
Sure. The property is about six years old. We took over about a year or so ago.
Yeah. And even six years ago, there were other developments.
Correct. But the market was stabilizing at that point, and there actually was a demand for additional beds at that point.
Well, we hope South Alabama continues to grow.
We absolutely do, too.
So that the demand will be there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah. And one other thing.
All right, Mrs. Rich?
The apartment complex that you represent is a typical three-story. It's not even a PUD. They're all connected. It's, you know, a big square. These are sort of individual, and I think they're looking for another type of environment for a student. And it doesn't have to be a student by any means either, just like yours. There's no requirement that it must be rented only to students. And it is in an area of town that has a lot of businesses and a lot of coming and going and schools. Besides, there's Spring Hill, right down the street from here. So again, it's offering a different type of lifestyle in the rental industry, so to speak. It's not quite in comparison to your facility.
I definitely understand that. I just wanted you guys to know the state in which the market stabilized this year, and how that could be detrimental on everyone next year.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. We understand that. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, we have people coming to us often regarding service stations, drugstores, saying, "We don't need another drugstore. We don't need another service station in our community." Council can't get involved in that. The market has to adjust itself. That's communism for us to say, "We're just going to have two service stations on this street and one over there." We're in a free enterprise system. If it's zoned for a service station, and they want a real one there, they have the right to do it, even though they may not make any money. We can't get involved in regulating the market. We have to obey the laws. That's the best we can do.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this rezoning, please come to the podium.
Madam President and council members, my name is Craig Stipes with Broad Street Partners. We're based out of Greenville, South Carolina. So in light of the recent discussions about need for student housing surrounding the University of Alabama, South Alabama, a couple of things that we consider, we don't consider things in a single leasing cycle. When you plan a project and you pursue a project, you look over some long-term trends of a university in the market. So some exciting things that have been happening at South Alabama that really was the impetus for us pursuing this were the following facts. And I love stating them. I've told them to lenders and investors, and this is an exciting time at South. So South has an enrollment of approximately 16,500 students, of which 11,500 are undergraduate. South Alabama just admitted their largest freshman class in university history. In addition, they recently broke ground on a new 375-person freshman dorm, which this young lady alluded to. We don't see that as constraint. We see that as growth. That's more growth for the university. South has experienced average enrollment growth of 2.35% year-over-year over the last decade. And South has decreased their admission rate over the last six years, meaning it's more competitive to get in. South has only the second accredited medical college in the state of Alabama. South offers over 100 degree programs from several different colleges. They compete at a high level in Division One Athletics in the Sun Belt Conference. They have a growing endowment of over $560 million, currently raising money for a D1 football stadium on campus. These are all factors of a university poised for growth, not a market that is dying. So with that, we also look at the competitive set. So we would compare South as a non-flagship university, and I just picked two out of the competitive set, one being Middle Tennessee State and one being University of North Carolina Greensboro. Middle Tennessee State has 19,000 undergraduate students, 3,000 on-campus bedrooms, and 7,100 off-campus bedrooms. South Alabama has 11,761 undergraduate students, 2,359 on-campus beds, and currently, with everything included, 110 that hit the market, has 2,600 off-campus bedrooms available to students. University of North Carolina Greensboro, 16,000 undergraduate students, 5,600 on-campus bedrooms, and 8,200 off-campus bedrooms available to students. So not every university is the same, and I understand that 110 came online this year, and it softened the market up a little bit. And apparently, the Edge has been the loser in that race, which is why they are here to talk about that. But the reality is, we're offering a different product type. Our four-bedroom units are 1,900 square feet. Their four-bedroom units are 1,350 square feet. We have onsite parking, where you can park right in front of your unit. We don't have to walk across the street to an off-site parking field. So we think all these things taken into consideration, we are bullish on the University of South Alabama and our project. And as Mr. Pipes alluded to, you know, this does fit within the long-term land use plan. So with that being said, I just want you to have all those facts when you consider this rezoning. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I would like to say, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
Yeah, that, you know, you don't have to sell USA to us. I believe that everyone in this council really supports USA and even the growth of the city. We want Mobile to be better than Tuscaloosa, you know, than the University of Alabama. But we are trying, as the city of Mobile, with our mayor, to be the most business-friendly city in America. So, I mean, we own business aside to grow Mobile.
Thank you.
Reassure.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Madam President. We're just happy to hear all of those great things that's happening at the University of South Alabama. I can attest to one great thing that happened at the University of South Alabama. I graduated in 1974 in the political science department and went back in graduate school in the history department. It's great.
And when you're going for a loan, add that.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you so much. All right. I can attest to one great thing that happened at the University of South Alabama. I graduated in nineteen-seven to fourth in the political science department and went back in graduate school in the history department. It's great.
And when you're going for a loan, add that.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you so much. All right. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this rezoning, please feel free to come to the podium. Okay. With that then, the public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to determine if the structures at eleven-forty-eight Michigan Avenue, fourteen-fifty-six Bay Avenue, four-ten Dunbar Street, two-thousand-one Edwards Avenue, and twelve-sixty-three Adams Street is public nuisance and ordering them repaired or demolished.
All right. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak to any of these properties, please come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Phyllis Power, and this is my brother Victor Power. I received a letter on the Fourth of the Fifth of this month about the two-thousand-and-one Edward Street.
Two-thousand-one Edward Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. It was addressed to Victor. This is my brother, and he's handicapped, so I handle all the affairs.
Okay.
Okay. I'm here to get a stenching because it was him and his brother that was on his property, and his brother is now deceased, which this is the first time he's hearing it. So, I would like to be granted a stenching for the two-thousand-and-one, so I can see what is needed to tear down this property.
Okay. Today is just a hearing to determine if the property is a nuisance and it needs to be repaired or demolished, so you do have some time on that. And if you would like to work with Mr. Doggenbaugh, who was up in the corner, he can help you go through the process and give you some tips on how to do what it is you would like to do, and if you have any other questions about the process, you know, he's happy to help you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Hi.
Thank you.
All right. The public hearing continues. If there's anyone who would like to speak to any of these other properties, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Angie Day Brown, and I'm representing the two-thousand-one Edward Street property as well.
Oh, okay.
I guess you just need to know your people. Because I recognize a young man, but I'm here for my dad. He's eighty-three years old. He lived in the house pretty much all of his life, and about thirteen years ago, he became ill with dialysis and open-heart surgery and all those type things. And he wants to keep the land going, and the house is just almost unrepairable, but he has spoken with some young lady, I don't even know where, but he told me to come, and she told him something about he could get a grant to repair the house. He doesn't want the house to be, you know, he doesn't want to lose the land. He's been paying the taxes on the land probably about, ever since I've known. I'm well over fifty years old, and that's about how long I think he's been paying on the land. So, as I said, I'm his daughter, and he just wanted me to come and speak with you all to see if there's anything that he can do to save his land and probably not the house, but maybe the land or anything.
All right. Again, why don't you, if you don't mind, David is up there, and he can answer any of your questions for you and be able to provide your father with some answers.
Okay.
That's great.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Anyone else who would like to speak to any of these properties? Okay. With that then, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Arianna McArthur. And Ms. McArthur is addressing the council regarding zero-nine-five-one-two, the transfer of monies from the police administration to Capitol Project Equipment Police Department.
Okay. She's not here? Ms. McArthur? All right.
Ordinance is held over fifty-seven-zero-twenty-seven, authorized dedication of a strip of city-owned vacant land as right-of-way for widening of Ziggler Boulevard.
Some moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Eighty-eight-zero-twenty-eight, ordinance deeming property not now needed for public or municipal purposes, and authorizing the sale of three-fifty Saint Joseph Street to the Siemens Hall LLC.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
I can't think of a better way to describe three-fifty Saint Joseph Street than to say that it's not now needed for public or municipal purposes. It has been a blight on that corner of Detante Square for a long time, and that entrance is one of the gateways to our beautiful city. I'm proud that these gentlemen have come forward, have the interest and the resources to appropriately rehab that facility and that it will add to our residential density downtown. So, I look forward to working with you all. However, my office can be of assistance, please let me know, and I am in one-hundred percent support of this agenda.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? I know all of those city employees who worked at Old City Hall North are not sad to see it go, and it will be a tremendous improvement. Thank you so much. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over twenty-one-four-eighty-two, authorized contract with CRB surveillance for Connie Hudson-Mobile Regional Senior Community Center security cameras.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would like to thank the administration for helping to get this to this point, for council approval. This is two things that will go on desperately needed. One is a PA system for the building, and the other is security cameras out on the outside of the building and near the parking lot where there's been some concerns. So, again, this is safety and also great for programming with the PA system. So, I thank everyone who pulled together to make that contract available to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-four-eighty-three, authorized contract with Acre Construction Corporation for Harmon Park playground improvements.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to thank Ms. Harden, Mr. Capps, and everyone that have worked with this project so long. The residents in this community have been requesting playground improvements for the last three and a half years. We're finally in a position where we can vote on this contract, and that work can begin. I'm looking forward to having a groundbreaking for this new playground. It'll be utilized extensively by the schoolchildren there at George Hall Elementary School. This will be a banner day in that section of the Maysville community, and I look forward to adding and augmenting playground improvements along this line and hopefully as many of our communities as possible, so that you don't have to travel out of your neighborhood in order to find a playground, in order to find suitable and high-quality recreational amenities. And so, I'm appreciative of this agenda. We've been working on this for about two years to see it come to fruition. I'm just as pleased as I can be, and I hear often people say, "Well, yeah, they're doing something now because it's election time." It has absolutely nothing to do with it. These projects that we're working on now were projects that we decided on a year or two years ago. It just takes that long for the resources to match the project. So, in that, you know, we're just rushing to get items through prior to an election. It's just the way that the work matched with the resources. You'll see us plan this year for next year, and then next year for twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty. It's just the way the process works. But in any regard, whether it's election time or any time, I'm glad to see it happen, and I look forward to more improvements of this nature happening in District Two.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-nine-four-eighty-four, transfer monies from General Fund District One discretionary to Mobile Museum of Art.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-four-eighty-five, authorized contract with JNA Contractor for Herndon Sage Park bleacher replacement.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Mr. Richardson?
Yes, ma'am. We are always trying to upgrade our various parks in, not only in District One, but throughout the city, but we're also focusing on trying to get lighting to the basketball court. Just want those kids that's up there at nine and ten o'clock at night to know we are working on that project. We have our engineering department trying to use the poles that's up there and design lighting so as to light up the basketball court when night comes. We will get there. It's gonna take a little time. Be patient with us, but we are working on lights, and I won't stop until it is lit up at night the same as the other fields at Sage Park.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-four-eighty-six, authorized contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises General Contractors for Fire Station Number Nine Parking Lot Paving and Drainage.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
Happy again to see this amended coming to our fire station. We support our first responders. That is inclusive of our firefighters in a way that where they emanate to go and fight fires and to save lives is important. The parking lot is in disarray, the drainage is all messed up. I'm happy that this agenda is on the agenda utilizing CIP forms so that we can put a first-class parking lot there and eradicate any issues they might be experiencing relative to drainage.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-five-four-eighty-seven, authorized acceptance of fee simple warranty deeds, temporary construction easements, and right-of-entry needed to widen Ziggler Boulevard.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? Just a little bit on this Ziggler widening project. This has been going on now for months, and utilities work is being performed as we speak. The utilities have to be moved, and that takes a long time to get all the utilities moved so the construction can begin. And what you're seeing on the agenda today is just part of the process in us being able to, or the construction crews being able to go onto several properties in order to move the utilities before the construction can actually begin. But if you drive down Ziggler, you will see a lot of progress is being made, and we certainly hope to see construction starting sooner rather than later in order to widen Ziggler and certainly to help traffic flow in the city of Mobile. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-one, oh, twenty-five-four-eighty-eight, authorized acceptance of permanent drainage easement from Park Lane LTD and Alabama Limited Partnership for Three Mile Creek at Ziggler Boulevard Drainage Improvements.
All right. Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-one-four-eighty-nine, amend twenty-sixteen action plan.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-four-ninety-four, authorized contract of Micor Inc. Doing Business MDS Construction for Theater Park New Walking Trail.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, sixty-four-zero-two-nine.
This ordinance will be delayed for one week by council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-three-four-ninety-five through fifty-eight-five-zero-eight.
Suspension of suspension of rules for meeting consideration of resolution zero-three-four-nine-five through fifty-eight-five-zero-eight.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-three-four-nine-five, four-nine-six, and four-nine-seven are reappointing Billy G. Hood to the Medical Clinic Board of the City of Mobile, Spring Hill. Four-nine-six, reappoint Ann Davis to the Ladd Peoples Memorial Stadium Public Park and Recreation Board, and reappointing William John Rooks to the Mobile Historic Development Commission.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
If I could just take a second, I would like to personally thank the two appointments from District Six, one for Ladd Stadium, Ann Davis, and the other one for the Mobile Historic Development Commission, which is William Rooks. Both of them are being reappointed, so I certainly appreciate their dedication to these two programs and for all the time and energy and resources and talents that they put forward on behalf of the district on both of those essential and great things that do events and also oversee our historic development within our town. So, again, I thank them for their service to the district.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-seven-four-ninety-eight, recommended approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for twenty-seventeen Independence Day Mexico on Highway Ninety-West.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-four-ninety-nine, five-hundred, five-oh-one, five-oh-two, five-oh-three are declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-six-five-zero-four, honorarily named Marion Beckham Drive as Henderson Way.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fifty-eight-five-zero-five, five-zero-six, five-zero-seven, and five-zero-eight are authorizing removal of weeds, declaring weeds noxious, assess cost for removal of weeds, and assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean group.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one-five-zero-nine through twenty-one-five-one-three.
Suspension of suspension of rules for meeting consideration of resolution twenty-one-five-ten through twenty-one-five-thirteen and to hold over twenty-one-five-oh-nine for one week.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-five-ten, authorized contract with Acre Construction Corporation for Medal of Honor Park Dog Park Drinking Fountain.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay. This is something really good. It's been a problem out there with the dog drinking fountains. They leak, and so there'll be improved new fountains we put in and some drainage program. I guess some kind of permeated surface to collect any water that does overspill from the, from those bowls. I also like to remind the administration that the locks, the self-locking system on those programs for the large dogs and the small dog-sized gates, and I'm hoping there's still funds available, but that that needs to be repaired as well, and I believe there is still funding to take care of that and look forward to that also being corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, five-eleven, authorized contract with LA South for Phase One Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail Site Furnishings and Amenities.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I think they're just about through with the sidewalks for the first leg of the Greenway Trail. Now we're dealing with putting the furnishings and amenities down, which meaning they're gonna come back with lights and they're gonna have benches along that trail and that's what this is going to be for. I have asked that we put lights down similar to what we do at the runway for airplane. You know, you come in on the airplane, the whole runway is lit up. I would like for the walking trail to be lit up just like we do for airplane runway. I don't know what are we gonna get there, but I want people to have that experience when they're driving down Stanton Road and they look over to the left. I want them to say, what is that? A thing, a beauty with all of those lights. So, we're gonna vote to let them start and I'm going to be out there hoping that we can get the kind of lights that I think would add a lot to the Greenway Trail.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a question of Councilman Richardson and that is, are these fundings then for the drawings and the plans but not the actual furnishings and lighting?
Say that again.
Is this contract, is this to draw out the plans and the placement or is this actually for the infrastructure, the eighteen K that we're approving? I should've asked that. I apologize that I didn't add pre-council.
I think this is for furnishing. This is for furnishing.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, five-one-three, authorized amendment to contract with Bert Klein-Peter for 2016 citywide MS4 stormwater litter control structures and drainage and inlet repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-nine, five-twelve through twenty-one, five-fourteen.
These resolutions were later for one week by Councilor.
Call for public carings, forty-one, five-one-five, forty-one, five-one-six, call for public carrying to consider the application of Frank Anderson Doing Business as Four-A Carriers for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a transportation service scheduled August twenty-ninth. And forty-one, five-one-six, call for public carrying to rezone property at fifty-eight, oh-three, fifty-eight, oh-nine and fifty-eight, eleven, Oshel Road, southwest corner of Oshel Road and Long Street from B-two and R-eight to B-two, Lot A, and R-one and R-two to R-three, Lot B, scheduled September nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Williams?
I just want to call to attention of the council. There is an email out that shows the report that pertains to the first application. If you have not seen it, I think it'd be important to review, but we need to have some discussion about when we should consider and not consider things that are well in the past.
Right.
And in this case, that's the difference and I'd be open to talk to all of y'all about it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, as long...
Mrs. Rich?
And as far as the next one, if you'll take the time also to read the staff report and also the recommendations that came out of the Planning Commission on that particular rezoning. So, as I mentioned, I had concerns and I look forward to hopefully talking with the applicant prior to the public hearing.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Next week, we will meet on Wednesday. That's August twenty-third. The municipal election is Tuesday, of course, so we will meet on Wednesday, same time, just different date. I will start now on my right with Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. As I was out this morning talking to voters leaving and coming to polls, there is some confusion and there's really no need for that. Plenty of information available through the clerk's office, but easily twenty-four hours a day at cityofmobile.org, there's a yellow tab that says election information. I have found nothing that has been of question, that I haven't been able to find an answer for, under that tab. Simply you have to do is just if you've lost a card and you need to know or you got a friend, help them out. Go to the website, type in your mailing address, it'll tell you where to go. Seventy-seven next week. There is still some confusion on three-one-one and what it is that the city council does with regard to public issues. If it is something that the city should address, anywhere in the city, it doesn't have to be near your house, you simply have to call, need only to call three-one-one. It does not save time, it doesn't speed the process up by calling us first because either we personally on the city council or the small staff that we have on the ninth floor is gonna have to go and put that request in and give the administration time to work on that issue. I think that the council and the administration are doing all that we can to address issues and occasionally we're gonna miss one. And when we do miss one, we want you to call to our attention, but please use the three-one-one system and help us, help you to account for your issue and so that we can address it as necessary. There was an agenda item that we voted on unanimously and that is a walking trail and if I'm not mistaken, all except for a recreation center that is many years in the future. We have completed the promises that were made to a community that helped us grow our city. And so I thank the community of Theodore for continuing to work with this office and the mayor and making their community as good as it can be. And I look forward to the completion of that trail and doing something very special at the park in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam President. It's gonna be a very busy week in District Three this coming week. I'm excited to say that the parents of the Matron Dolphin Football Team had contacted me a couple of weeks ago and said that they wanted to have a reopening of the Matron Park Football Field before their home games. So on this Thursday at five-thirty PM, which will be August the seventeenth, we would be having the reopening of Matron Park Football Field. The city had invested over a half million dollars and with new lights and a new field to make it a soccer and a football field. The parents and the football players and the coaches are very excited about the renovation that has been done at Matron Park. And again, Matron Park is located at twenty-four, twelve Hallsmere Road and it will be at five-thirty this coming Thursday, inviting the community to come out and celebrate a great thing that is going on off the Hallsmere Road area. Inviting, again, inviting all the citizens to come out this coming Thursday at five-thirty PM for the reopening of the Matron Football Field for the Matron Dolphins Football Team. Also on Saturday, August the nineteenth, from nine AM to eleven o'clock AM, the St. Andrew Episcopal Church, which is located at eighteen fifty-four Staples Road off of Dolphin on the Parkway, will be passing our free beans and rice. This is a ministry that is given by the church and is for the community, no questions asked and just show up and they will pass it to you. On this coming Sunday, it's something very, very dear to my heart. Way before I took council, there was a nine-foot hole located in front of Craighead Elementary School. Around that hole on Ann Street was barricades to keep people from going inside the hole. My biggest fear was that the kids at the Craighead Elementary School would climb those barricades and get inside that nine-foot hole and something devastating would have happened. When I took council, you know, one question was asked, you know, what is one of the first things that you're going to try to implement, you know, in the district? And I said, Ann Street. You know, I had people that contacted me and said, you know, be careful what you say in the media because they'll come back and hunt you and don't try to promise something that you cannot deliver. Well, I'm glad to say that on this coming Sunday, which is August the twentieth, we're gonna have the grand reopening of Ann Street. Ann Street has been completely rebuilt. We have new drainage, new sidewalks, even new mailboxes for the citizens that's located between Arlington Street and Tennessee Street. If you was to just go down Ann Street now, it don't even look like you're on the east side of sixty-five. It was almost like on the west side of sixty-five, the new area of Mobile. This is something that is very, very, being dear to my heart. We invited all the citizens to come out this coming Sunday at two o'clock PM at the corner of Baltimore Street and Ann Street for this great celebration in District Three. We know that Ann Street is one of the worst streets in Mobile. You really didn't have to have no speed bumps on Ann Street because you have natural speed bumps. But this is a great celebration that we can ride smoothly from District Three to all over to District Two to Brother Manzey District. But Brother Manzey just remembered that District Three streets have been completely rebuilt, not just paved. But this is a great celebration. The citizens along the Ann Street area is very excited about the new building with the rebuilding of Ann Street. It has been like a five-year, four-to-five-year progress, but it has been, it meant every, you know, every time, every situation bad with the dust and dirt and detours is really has been worth it and we're expecting for this street to be last us for another fifty years plus. Again, that would be Sunday at two o'clock at the corner of Baltimore and Ann Street. And remembering that District Three is a place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you and congratulations, Mr. Small. Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. Some of you may remember that the Citizens Advisory Council was, to the police, was due to come through to District Six, but we had to cancel that meeting because the site was the Connie Hudson Senior Center in the evening, but that turned out to be an election school for, from a lot of individuals that needed to come in to learn about the city's election that they're working in the polls. So we pulled the plug on that and we're looking at a date in September. It's not been firmed up. Right now, the Senior Center is, of course, an election site for many people, for this primary, the senate primary, and then again, of course, for the city council race. A lot of people are confused about where to vote. I think that Councilman Williams gave a lot of good information about going on our website and putting your address in and it will tell you exactly where to go. I get a lot of questions about why does the city do that? Why do we have to go somewhere else? State law is very clear. Not only do you have to vote in your district, but you also have to vote into the precinct you were assigned to. And so that is why there are some shakeups. It doesn't happen in all areas of the city, but do pay attention to that because we'd hate for you to go to a poll that you went to this week that is not a city poll next week and therefore you get discouraged or frustrated. So the reason is very simple. It's not just to make things difficult. It's literally the law and we must obey it. So, again, just pay attention and exercise your right to vote at both of those very important elections. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam President. For today, go vote. I would like to start off by saying that I've been holding my Midtown Community Meeting on Thursday, August the third to first and that meeting would be held at the Ashland Place, United Methodist Church, and it will start at six PM, asking all of the citizens in the Midtown Community to please come out and join us. Not only are we gonna talk about things that you're interested in, we wanna hear from you. We will be giving you an update on Publix. We're gonna talk about these crucial drainage issues and give you update on them. We're gonna talk about broken sidewalks, new sidewalks is coming, the CIP program for 2018, and the list goes on. We're gonna have someone from the police department to give us an update on crime and public safety. So, we're gonna have a great meeting planned for you. We're gonna ask all our citizens to please come out and join us. Resurfacing is on the way on Main Street. Main Street may be the longest street in Trinity Gardens that starts at Pritchett Avenue and runs all the way to I-65. And because of where the city partnering with the county with the Peshawag Main, money was allocated to complete the resurface of all of Main Street and that has already started. I hope by the end of next week, the resurfacing will be completed on Main Street. That is big. Except for East Salt Street, we, well, they're working on East Salt Street now, closing the ditches and we expect to have that resurfaced very soon once they finish closing the ditches running along East Salt Street. We already have Collins and Warsaw already completed. The new fire station in Creighton, they've already completed the foundation work and they have already started the framing work. They started that yesterday at the fire station, so we are on the move over there. Keep in mind, we asked for a meeting room for the citizens in Creighton to have a place to meet. The meeting room is gonna be included, so we are waiting on that to happen. Two weeks ago, we had citizens in here from Tobinville asking us to allow the Tobinville Titans to practice at Figures Park. And for the last two weeks, that information was passed on to the administration and we've been negotiating with them for a successful conclusion to that issue. And I applaud our finance director and Chief of Staff Hall Welsh and City Attorney Ricardo Woods for working out a resolution to that. They announced to me today that the Tobinville Titans will be able to practice at Figures Park. And I just think that is absolutely tremendous and I close by saying I'll probably get more three-one-one calls than anyone else. And I make it plain that it's three things that the mayor is over. He's over pretending to three-one-one. City employees, he is over the city's property and the city equipment. So if you make a call for city services and if it's going to require a city employee to do it, if it's gonna require city equipment or it has to do with city property, it's three-one-one. That's the mayor. It's nothing we can do about that. But that ain't, that ain't why I get calls. I get calls because they claim three-one-one is not working and they think they can appeal to the council to make it work. We have no authority over three-one-one. You have to appeal to the mayor, two-oh-eight-seven-three-nine-five. You appeal to the mayor. If one of his agents is not working, you need to go to him, not us. We have absolutely no authority over three-one-one, any of the workers over there, any departments in the city. We don't have any authority over them. They all work for the mayor. Thank you, Madam President.
Joe?
Thank you, Madam President. Today we had on the agenda a item to sell the Siemens Building, which has been an albatross around our necks for years and years and years and years. I'm delighted that it's going to be put to a permanent, non-public use. But Siemens Building is the tip of the iceberg. We have many, many buildings that the city owns and pieces of unimproved property across the city that the building owns that we may or may not need, that are in poor shape, that need work. I'm delighted that the administration has contracted with an outside firm, CB Richard Ellis, a firm with which I am very familiar, first-class outfit, to do a complete facilities assessment of all of our buildings and all of our real property that we have across the city in order that we can know once and for all what we need, what we don't need, what needs to be fixed, how much it will cost, and then we can move ahead with respect to perhaps consolidating, getting rid of some of these other properties so that we can more efficiently handle our real estate assets in the city of Mobile. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Manzey?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to remind the good citizens of District Two to go and exercise your right to vote today. I wanna congratulate my colleague, Councilman CJ Small. Ann Street is no small accomplishment. I served on our county school board and represented Craighead when that hole appeared and it was a great concern to me, it was a great concern to the principal, to superintendent, other members of the school board, and to see that that goal has been accomplished, my hat goes off to you. Congratulations. I hope your groundbreaking, I mean not your groundbreaking, your celebration Sunday is a great success and the citizens in the District Three portion have a totally rebuilt Ann Street. Citizens on my portion have a smoother ride on Ann Street. You can't tell a dime's worth of difference in the ride. If you start on my side and go all the way down his side, you can't tell a dime's worth of difference. But I am congratulating him because it was a great work. We still have that to do on my side. I'm gonna follow his model. I'm following in his footsteps to make certain that the citizens on my end get the same treatment that the citizens on the other end of Ann have received. So I applaud you because I know how hard, I know how much resources it took to get that to happen and my hat's off to you.
All right. Thank you.
This past Saturday, I held a back-to-school bash at the Hillsdale Recreation Center. We had a really great turnout. I was happy to see so many people come, so many children and their families. I want to thank in particular Marion Steinfels, who works with us on the city council. She and Greg Ciprian at Special Events really spearheaded the effort to put it together. Also want to thank Bertie Anderson out at Hillsdale, the Recreation Center. She is the center director, as well as our police and firefighters who came.
Also want to thank Bertie Anderson out at Hillsdale, the Recreation Center. She is the center director, as well as our police and firefighters who came. It was really great to see one of our firefighters. I had to twist his arm a little bit, but he finally got his face painted. And then Chief Batiste, also, I didn't have to twist his arm. He was readily willing and able to get his face painted. So thank you so much for the police officers and firefighters who came to be a part of it. Also, I want to thank Adams and Reese in particular for sponsoring the event. It's always wonderful to have sponsors who will offset the cost of doing these events. We had face painting, balloon clouds, and a movie, as well as hot dogs from the Do Drop Inn, and they were very popular. So thank you to everyone for your work, for all the time and energy you put into making this event a successful one. It was great to see so many kids and families out, and we will work on making it even bigger and better next year. I also want to remind everyone, as the mayor mentioned earlier, this is Single Stream Saturday, and there is a recycling drop-off at Langen Park directly across from the museum. So come on out, and if you're one of the fifty-first, first fifty people who are out there, you will receive a blue bin, so get on out and take your recycling. Again, it's the Single Stream, and it is located directly across from the museum on Museum Drive at Langen Park. Also, just as a reminder, if you haven't seen it yet, we are continuing to finish this phase of sidewalk repairs in District Seven. They are just about finished, and the pay-as-you-go resurfacing work is underway now. Thanks to our county commissioner Connie Hudson for making this funding available. It all looks great, and I'm really happy to see this work in progress. Is there anyone else who would like to make an announcement? Any other discussion, anybody at all? Mr. Manzy?
You mentioned sidewalks, and I just want to remind the citizens down the bay, starting on Charleston, going all the way down, that the sidewalk repair people are in place. They're working on the ADA accessible sidewalk ramps now and making sidewalk improvements, starting on Charleston, going all the way down in the down-the-bay area. So be on the lookout for that. You should have received the letter, but just in case you might be watching, I'm letting you know now.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Last Wednesday?
Aye.
Okay. All right, all right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and with that, we are adjourned.